We're gonna call on Pastor Dale Hexum for our invocation here momentarily, but I just want to also just say it's with profound sadness that tonight we mourn the loss and the untimely passing of our city employee and our friend Dave Saggarhorn. Losing a colleague is never, never easy. It's especially difficult when they've been a part of the community for as long as Dave was a part of this community and as long as he was a part of this team with the city of Fergus Falls. I knew Dave as a kid. We grew up together, played at Cleveland Park, played baseball. I also coached against Dave when he and I both coached our sons as adults. Dave started with the city in 1999. His 25-year career was committed to serving this community in the refuse department and his presence will be missed by many throughout the city. On behalf of the entire city of Fergus Falls, I want to offer our sincere condolences to his family, to his wife Tessa, to his children, Jordan, Dylan, Aaron, and Justice, to his friends, his colleagues, his coworkers, and the entire city. So would you please rise and join me with a moment of silence followed by our invocation?
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you this evening for the blessing of this day and the promise of spring and the promise of new life. Lord, tonight we pray for the Saggarhorn family. Lord, we pray that your peace and your comfort would be upon them, that you would be with them, you would be near them as we lift them before you this evening. Lord, we also thank you this evening for the blessing and privilege of living in this community, of living in this state, and living in this country. We thank you for the freedom and the liberty that we are blessed with, knowing that so many around the world don't have that blessing. Lord, as these leaders of our city gather together tonight, we pray that you would give them wisdom, we pray that you would give them discernment, we pray that you would give them both patience and joy as they serve. Lord, we pray that the discussions that take place and the decisions that are made this evening, we pray that they would not only be beneficial and positive for our community, we also pray that the discussions and the decisions would honor and glorify your name. We pray that your hand would be upon all that takes place here in this room. And we pray all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It is May 6, 2024, and I will call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Him.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. Next, we'll have the open forum session of the agenda. So anyone wishing to speak to the council on any item that is not on the agenda, feel free to do so at this time. Step to the lectern and state your name. Seeing no one, we will move along to the approval of the agenda. I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth, if there are any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Council members, good evening. And, Your Honor, thank you for those kind words for Dave and his family. There is one item on the consent agenda, item number 10, that Councilmember Craymire has asked to be discussed. Otherwise, I am not aware of any other changes to the agenda this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Andrew. I would entertain a motion approving the agenda with that, with the number 10 on the consent agenda removed?
I'll make that. Could I also pull number 12?
Number 12, certainly. Thank you, Scott. Motion. Second, Jim, thank you all in favor of that motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries. Tonight, under awarding of bids, first item will be a resolution awarding the construction services contract for CP 9148, the D-Logoon Park improvements to Comstock Construction. We will call on our city engineer, Brian Yvaro, to introduce that for us this evening. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening, Your Honor and council members. Yes, on March 19th, we received a floor total of four bids for public improvement 9148. This is the D-Logoon Park improvements, primarily consisting of lighting and campground and utility improvements. The apparent little bidder was Comstock Construction with a total base bid amount of $3,290,437.93. The engineer's estimate for this work was approximately $3,408,000. I've attached a bid's abstract for review along with a memo from Bolton and Mink. So at this time, I'm just gonna turn it over to Grant Cooper from Bolton, just to give you a walkthrough of post-bid results and how we arrived at the recommended actions before, so.
At this time, Grant, would you like to take it over?
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Grant.
Thanks, Brian. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Yeah, just gonna provide an update of where we're at right now with the bids received recently for both the campground improvements as well as the lighting as well. To date, the council's approved the softball complex lighting be moved forward, and that's nearly complete. There's a few items still to wrap up with that, but the softball complex lighting is nearly complete. So, as Brian mentioned, bids were received March 19th, four to be exact, and were opened and read publicly aloud. The bidding documents, and I visited with you all at a committee of the whole meeting, where we added 14 bid alternates in the bid package to allow maximum flexibility on the project, to be able to kinda add and take away as the council saw fit. So, there were 14 bid alternates with the project scope, and when, after bids were open, we met with the project management team consisting of city staff as well as a council member to just discuss the bids, look at the alternates and select those, and that's what I'm putting before tonight, the recommended base bid and alternates. Just to look at the overall scope, we showed this figure a handful of times, but this is the campground. It consists of 42 RV sites, 10 of which have full electrical sewer and water hookups. The remaining 32 have water and electrical. There's nine tent sites on kind of the north end of the, or the top of the picture there, that loop with the smaller sites, an RV dump station, a shower restroom building, the roadway, the black roadway is paved with asphalt from the entrance up to the restroom area, and then the remaining campground is aggregate or gravel. Additionally, that you can't really, and I'll go back here, on the top of the screen, the top left, there's also improvements to the entrance to the shooting range and archery range as well there. So, what you can't see on this picture is that we also have sewer and water stubs to the softball restroom facility, and then we're also decommissioning the drain field for that facility. There's also water service to the BMX track, to a future soccer restroom complex, as well as a water service to the shooting range. So that's kind of the overall scope of what this bid was. And within our memo, we have a table that shows the base bid and then the recommended alternative. So the alternatives consist of a water service to the shooting range, paved road all the way to the shower building, which is shown on the figure there, and then also installing the water main in a shallower depth. And this provided a cost savings to the city that when we discussed with the project management team, they saw it as a savings where Public Works was willing to have to blow out that system each year, and it was worth the savings that were shown. So, the total for Comstock Construction's bid, including the alternates recommended, is $3,304,875.71. Comstock Construction is a respectable company. They've done good work here in the city. We've worked with them directly on the Phase 1 and Phase 2 downtown riverfront improvements, and they're definitely qualified for the construction of this project. So that's the campground bid that we received in March, and now we'll go into the ballfield lighting. Like I said, to date, the softball complex has been, it's nearly complete. That was approved by the council in December to move forward with that. And we decided at that point that the baseball field, Legion Field and Farmers Field, are gonna get put on pause, just to wait until this campground bid came in and we could look at the project budget as a whole. And so, once bids were received for the campground, it became apparent that a more measured approach would be required for the Legion and Farmers Field lighting. And so we met with the project management team, came up with the idea to do more of a retrofit for those fields. So, what we went out and solicited quotes for was to install new LED fixtures at Legion Field, salvage the existing fixtures at Legion Field and install those on the Farmers Field, at Farmers Field. The four Farmers Field infield poles are too short, so there'd also be four new infield poles for those lights as well. So this approach provided significant upgrades to the lighting at those fields, and then also provided a cost savings compared to the original all-new quote that we got. So, the difference in the retrofit versus the all-new quote was a savings of $417,803. Quotes for the retrofit were solicited from multiple contractors, and Otter Electric of Fergus Falls provided the lowest quote, and they're, again, a company that's very capable of doing this work out there, and they have done work in the past out at D- Lagoon Park. One other item that we ran into during construction of the softball complex was that the existing direct berry wiring system was failing. It has worked in years leading up to now, but with the new system that we're installing, the electrical drivers for this new system are more sensitive and weren't compatible, given the voltage loss that was seen in the wiring out there. And so, it was required that we put in new wiring for the softball complex, and that's also shown in the table within your memo. So, the total for the lighting improvements, which has been previously improved, the softball complex, the retrofit of Legion Field, the retrofit of Farmers Field, and the replace the wiring at the softball complex totals $985,459. So let's look at this as a total project budget now. The total estimated cost to complete the campground and lighting improvements as recommended above and as previously approved is $5,512,369.7. This is $312,369.7 more than the approved local option sales tax amount of 5.2 million. Again, this was a discussion that was pretty lengthy at our last project management team meeting on April 29th, when we came up with the solution to cover and use two additional funding sources, the remaining local option sales tax from the Fergus Falls Public Library project and utility funds as well. A breakdown of the total project costs is also included in our memo as well for the total project. As typical for projects of this nature, the project includes a 10% construction contingency. In our discussions with the project management team, it was noted that we'll watch that very closely throughout construction, and if there are additional funds, we would obviously come back to the city is to potentially do some additional alternates for the campground. Could be paving the entire campground or other improvements as approved by the city. Another thing I want to note that isn't in your memo is that there is, we ran some calculations, and based on some conservative occupancy rates, also the, what can be a general cost per site, the city will see a return on investment on this. We estimate between $100,000 to $150,000 a year. Again, very dependent on occupancy rates, but if this is ran as a typical, a good campground is run efficiently, the city can expect to see a return on that investment for the campground as well. In conclusion, the proposed project would make significant improvements to the D-Logoon Park. The recommended project scope is carefully considered to maximize those improvements with the budget in mind. If the city of Fergus Falls wishes to proceed with the improvements outlined above, we recommend awarding D-Logoon Park improvements contract the campground with alternates 3B, 4, and 8 to Comstock Construction, and then also in the council action request as well, I'm kinda covering some of the other items there, is authorize the city staff to proceed with the quoted electrical improvements. This has, I mean, this has been a project that's been a lot of fun for our team to work on and work with the city. It's been a lot of collaboration and being creative with solutions. And so, like I said, you have a great city staff here. It's been a pleasure working with them all and look forward to continue working with them. So, any questions that you would have?
Grant, thanks. Thanks for the presentation. I do have a question. If, could you just address the loss of trees as a result of this?
Yes, thank you. I meant to cover that. So, it was deemed, so with the project, we knew that there was gonna be some tree loss, given the campground layout. We aimed, with the city staff availability, we saw it as the ability to save some costs as well by having city staff do it since they were available, save money on the project bids as well. And then, yes, it was necessary, given the campground layout, to remove some of the trees in the area. And we met with the project management team and actually changed the trees that were gonna be removed because, and that's what changed on that loop, where there's more sites parallel to the road to, again, save more trees. So, an unfortunate requirement for some of these projects is removal of trees. We did our best to save as many as possible, but that is a result of projects like this.
Thanks, Grant. We'll have discussions. Someone like to offer a resolution?
I would offer the resolution.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
All right. Questions?
I think Scott. Scott wanted to go first.
Go ahead, Scott.
My comments have to do with the alternate number eight for the deduct on the shallower water placement. I've been on the golf committee. We've been reviewing things to do with the golf course over the last few months, and one of the issues that has surfaced, so to speak, at the golf course is the repair for water lines for the irrigation system. So it's just something that we're very aware of, that every year there's something to fix. There's always something to fix. And it seems like if we had the opportunity to put this in and avoid that problem right off the bat, it would be in our best interest. And given the way the costs came together and the fact that you've expected an ROI on this of over $100,000 a year, I think that if we spent that $40,000 now, we'd be very much ahead in the long run to not have a maintenance and ongoing cost of shallow water lines in the future. And so I'd like to offer an amendment to the motion that we removed that alternate eight from the motion.
Jim, it's your resolution. Are you okay with Scott's recommendation?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, we're doing that. Bill, are we gonna be able to take some more of the utility fund then? Is that what we do?
Well, I'll explain just a little further about, so we have leftover sales tax dollars from the library. We paid that off. Then you transferred any leftover sales tax dollars to the general fund. Right now, there's about $275,000 probably remaining there. So the project management team was looking at taking maybe half from that, and the other half, or $156,000 from the utilities funds, because there is a lot of water and sewer utilities out here. So, maybe taking that 76 from each of that. So, you could do that with utilities, or you could take a bit more from that sales tax, too. We were holding some of that back. I know we have a technology project coming up. We'll bring back to you in the future, too, and that's, you know, a funding source for that as well, but it's, you have the ability to use that, so.
Thanks. Anthony, you have a question?
Yeah.
Question?
I would say we could take it out of the contingency. We have $330,000 in the contingency. That's what it's for. I think, a couple of things. It would be nice that we don't have a surprise at the end, that somebody comes along and says, "For the safety of the occupants of the campground, we really should include X." You know, because obviously, you know, we did a splash pad across the road that was by a river, you know, with a steep slope, and then at the end of the day, somebody says, "Oh, by the way, you know, it's critically, it's critical that we have, you know, we put the safety of our children first," which we should do. We should be cognizant of safety, and therefore that cost us another $80,000. So I would ask that the committee, you know, review any safety aspect of this project now, as opposed to coming back in four months' time and then saying, "Oh, by the way, you know, we should have kind of grounded all the electrics because that would be kind of a safe thing to do." And then, on the trees that get removed, is there a plan to replant trees or, you know, prairie grasses or anything around the campsites included in the project?
No, there is nothing from a landscaping included in the project bid.
So it's just gonna get re-grass seeded, right?
Correct. Yep.
So is that something that we should, again, you know, that's something like, you know, should that be included in the project, you know, because you're just gonna put RVs in the park and we're gonna not replant the trees? I mean, I think that's something I would like to see is putting the trees back. We are a tree city, after all, so. So, Scott?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anthony?
We can, we can ask.
More trees.
We can ask.
I'll leave you with it.
I got, we did.
I have a question also. How many trees are we removing?
They're already removed.
I'm giving one live in here.
How many were removed?
About 100, right?
There's one that was, it's a lump sum item, because there's a grove that was kind of in the middle there that we didn't count every tree. It was easier to do it as a lump sum item. It was, it was over 100 trees in total.
I wonder if we could ask our Public Works Department to come back and, you know, they plant, I don't know how many trees, they plant a lot of trees every year, and what to, you know, to propose something to the council. Because I think you're right, Anthony, we need to replant those trees.
I mean, they'll take 20 years to grow, to off a shade and et cetera to the campus anyway, and make it more of a park.
We can, that's something we can ask staff.
Scott? And we, we didn't really talk about the trees. We're trying to figure out saving money, but the safety part of it, we're already talking about, and we haven't got it included in the plan, is the gate we talked about. When they enter, the only way you can get in is you have a code to get into the campgrounds, and once you're there, that'll kind of eliminate. If you put a gate up, we won't have anybody have to man the place. It just, pretty much, if you have a gate code to get in, and that's where you go. I wasn't in one in Iowa, and it worked really good. So, that's what we're looking for, safety, if you want to talk about that, Anthony. But we haven't, that's not in this. That'll come up later. I'm not sure where we're gonna, where we're gonna find the money on that, Bill. Did you, we ever talk about that? Contingency, I think it was, on that?
Maybe contingency, yeah, to see where it.
Right. So we were talking about the safety part, but that's about the only thing that I can think of with this whole thing is, would be the problem, of keeping people out of there that don't belong in there.
I suppose on the safety, is there adequate kind of fencing between the shooting and archery range in the campsite?
I believe the shooting range has a really good fencing around it already, so.
Does on the trail side.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments? We have a resolution that's been amended. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. The resolution is approved.
Your Honor, don't we have to vote on the amendment first and then vote on the motion as amended?
Hmm, very good.
Okay, how about this? We have an amendment to the resolution that we've already voted on, but since we voted on it, all in favor of amending the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That motion carries, and now we got the resolution. Thanks, Jim. I got a little ahead of myself, but thank you. Next item would be consideration of a resolution accepting Bolton and Mink's professional services proposal for construction administration of this project at the D-Logoon Park in the amount of $242,300. Someone like to offer that?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second him.
Thank you, Anthony. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Next would be a resolution awarding the lighting retrofit quote for this D-Logoon improvement project to Otter Electric in the amount of $163,500 for the Legion Field lighting improvements. If someone would like to offer that.
I'd nominate Tom Ruffer to do that one, as Mr. Sparky.
Jim from the Legion will give that one, I'm sure. Jim's got, Jim offered that resolution?
I'm the finance officer for the Legion.
For the Legion.
I'll second.
They built the fill, there you go. All right, Scott, thank you. Questions? Tom?
And referencing Anthony's comment earlier about the grounding of the electrics, you'll get good quality work from those union electricians.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. I thought everybody else went early, so I would balance that.
That resolution is approved. And finally, we will look for a resolution awarding the lighting retrofit quote for this D-Logoon improvement project to Otter Electric in the amount of $49,000 for the retrofitting of Farmers Field lighting. Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Brent. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And then just as a side note, kind of the next step now, we're gonna put the financing package together for this, so we're gonna work expeditiously on that because we're cash flowing all these projects. So, we've started that process, but now that this has been adopted, we're gonna be coming back to you soon and get that hopefully done in the next month or two, so.
Perfect. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I think Mr. Layton has a question.
Yes.
Thank you. How many total slips?
Say again?
How many total slips?
Camp sites.
Spaces?
Oh, RV, there's 42, and then, uh...
Nine.
And nine tent sites.
I'm sorry, 42 RV?
Yep. And nine tent sites.
Nice presentation. When you indicated that there's gonna be a return to the city of $150,000 a year, we don't know what the expenses are yet, so that might not necessarily How many have driven a 50-foot RV with a boat or a car behind it? And how many have gone into a RV park like this that you had to back out?
Back in. Unhook your car and back it in, or unhook your car off your fifth wheel and back. That's what I gotta do, and back it in.
It would be nice to see that Bolton looks at this and see if there could be just a straight drive-through. We have young people drive RVs, but we also have some older people. I think there could be a change in design a bit where we could drive in, drive straight The condition of the trees, are they viable trees or are they just scrubs? I don't know how old they are, I don't know how mature they are, but could they be replanted?
I think they're gone, Mark.
Yeah, they're gone.
They're gone.
They're what?
They've gone.
They're chopped down. They're gone.
They're gone, yeah.
So I'll retract that request. But I really think that I've shared some information with some of the council people that have looked at this, and I would strongly recommend some form of a drive-through on the RVs. They get bigger, and if you come in at night to back up, bit of a challenge. I've done it.
Absolutely.
But it's a bit of a challenge, lit or not lit. So, a revaluation. Scott, feel free to talk to Mr. Hicks, and I think he's got the email. If you want to cut expenses, you know, maybe, how many RVs in the history have this thing been? How many have attended it at one time over a weekend? Is it 20? Is it 30? Is it 50? 42 slips? I don't know. Do you need 42 slips if you cut them back a little bit? Do you need forty-two slips if you cut them back a little bit? Just a, a little wisdom.
Well, Mark, with the state parks, you can't even get into them anymore. If you don't have reservations now, you won't get into nothing the whole summer on the weekends.
And I understand, but I, I'm just trying to figure out how many RVs have typically used that. We are in the Lakes area. If I were to come here with an RV, I would most likely go to a lake or go to, you know, who I'm visiting and stay there. But there are people who do come to Fergus, would like to see an RV with a nice dump. Don't get me wrong, but I'm not impressed with the layout at this point. If you could do anything, I'm sure that people would be happy. And it's out of scale, so I don't know what the drive-in looks like in the dump station. Again, if you got a fifty-foot RV, a car behind it, a boat behind it, you're gonna be in the traffic.
We had great, we had a great discussion on the dump station, because we, I've done it. I know exactly what it is and mine is sixty-five feet long and I know exactly what you're talking about, so.
And again, this is out of scale. I mean, I, I can't understand it, but the drive-in, back-out is kind of a tough deal. Back-in, drive-out is kind of a tough deal. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Layton. There are no petitions or communications this evening. Under the consent agenda, there are items that have been presented. We're removing items ten and twelve. That leaves ten items remaining and we'd like to remove any other items. We can do that?
Make that. I'll second it.
A resolution to accept those ten items from Scott, seconded by Anthony. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number ten is a motion directing staff to draft a resolution based off the recommendations of the Greater Fergus Falls and City of Fergus Falls Working Group that was presented on Wednesday morning. Councilmember Craymeyer, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I do have a question. I'd just like to, maybe somebody could help me understand a couple things here with this new proposed payment structure that Greater Fergus Falls is requesting. They do receive fifty thousand a year as it stands right now and now they would like to have another four thousand per month. If my math is correct, that'd be another forty-eight thousand dollars. And then they want commissions on sales of property that the city owns. The five percent commission seems a little counterproductive to me. I guess I look at it as if we want to attract a business and to get them in here, let's give them five percent. I've checked with another economic group and to them, that's very foreign. As far as they know, it's never been done. There's already fifty thousand dollars going to Greater Fergus Falls and we're gonna be looking at another forty-eight thousand. I am a believer in economic development, but I don't know if we need a new business model on how to do that. I was gonna get ahold of Lance and I spoke last Friday. I reached out to Lance Anderson, the executive director of Greater Fergus Falls. We were unable to contact and today it was, I couldn't make the, the meeting that we wanted to have before tonight's council meeting. Cause I wanted to talk about these things before we have our meeting tonight. I would like to know what are some of the larger businesses or industry that's come in since Greater Fergus Falls was developed? You look at some of the numbers and it looks flat. It looks like it's paying for salaries and some expenses, but I don't understand how we can give up more money when there's not a proven track record. I feel we're hemorrhaging money right now. And believe me, I want us to succeed, but I'm very hesitant on this just because I wanna see a proven, proven track record. I know that there's a Greater Fergus Falls sign by the old mill. I don't know if Greater Fergus Falls reached out to that developer or not. I know that there was some other things that were going to happen in the area of Fergus Falls and they didn't reach out to them. Those people came to Fergus, came to the Greater Fergus Falls or to the city of Fergus Falls. I think if this, something like this is, I think it should be happening right now, that there should be a, a monthly report at least to the city on what's going on. I think we all have to be accountable. I'm accountable, that I have to be. I have to answer some questions that aren't so easy. I mean, this is another, this then would be a hundred thousand dollars plus commission on properties. It's a lot of money that could go to a business to help them succeed. And now we're looking at a franchise tax coming down the road, which the director from the chamber spoke that the business, the businesses that she spoke to were not in favor of it. I think it's a very touchy subject. I think the franchise tax should be put on hold and I think that we need to have some, some really hard numbers, what's went on in these past years with Greater Fergus Falls. This is money. This is, you know, it's a lot of money. And I'm not trying to attack anybody, I'm just looking at, for accountability. That's all I had to say.
Thanks, Councilmember Craymeyer.
Do you want, Scott, do you wanna address that or do you want me to do it?
Someone like to offer a motion?
Well, I'll, I'll offer it first and then I wanna address what Al said.
Thanks, Scott. Second, Tom. Go ahead, Scott.
I'm not sure I followed a question there to answer, so if you'd like to roll with it.
I think I kinda rolled with, and Al, I agree with you a hundred percent. We've given a lot of money over the years and that was the first meeting we spent about is what do we get back for it? And so Lance and us and the rest of us discussed it and there is gonna be a monthly meeting, a report back to us. Lance and Clara are gonna meet, I don't know, monthly, probably monthly. So there's gonna be reports back and accountability for it. I agree a hundred percent, Al, what you said. And that was a great part of our discussion of, I don't know how many meetings we met, but we've come down, four meetings, and we've come down to this and Lance was all about it and getting a report card back to us about what's going on and what contacts are going on and to make sure that, that we are in, in the conversation, not we, I should say. Claire's in the conversation, so she knows what's going on and so the world isn't promised. And then we, the council is the bad guy when we say, no, we can't do that on different projects. So I think it's gonna, it's a, we had a great discussion. I think it's a great move for, I don't, you know, the money is trying to, it's tough to figure out where the money's gonna come from and I know their situation if, you know, we've got probably about a year left if we don't find some more revenues for Greater Fergus Falls. And so we come up with this solution and I believe that there, we'll be watching over, I believe there'll be some good results about it. Now, if we're gonna sell stuff or get people here, I don't know that, I can't, nobody can produce, but I know the communication's gonna be wide open, it'll be a lot better than it was. Not that I'm saying it was bad, but it's gonna be, we're gonna open the doors more.
I guess.
Hope I agreed that, Al.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make, you know, to kind of follow up on that too, is it seems like we're rewarding something that we haven't gotten yet. And to me, that's counterproductive. And it has nothing to do with you, Lance, you're a good person. I just don't think it's a good fit. Maybe others do and if that's the case, that's what it is. But I'm very, very concerned that, you know, we have to go out and seek out, really have to basically beat the bushes. And there needs to be hopefully some, something produced from that. Scott, did you have something to?
Yeah, I'd like to jump in if I may. Yeah, I mean, this is really hard to listen to. Greater Fergus Falls has been all over social media for years and years and years. Every time you guys celebrate another success, it's, it's all over. Your website is kept up to date with a list of all the projects that you've done. It's not, it's not a secret. It's, it's, it's been a success. I don't make any, I don't make any secret about the fact that I'm a wholehearted supporter of Greater Fergus Falls. I believe in their mission and, and they've got the results. And, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we were to pay a staff member to do economic development full-time, it would probably cost us, what, a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year, probably in that ballpark? So if you look at what we've gotten from Greater Fergus Falls, if you look at the investment that they've brought to our city, it's a pretty darn good investment that the city makes in Greater Fergus Falls. And I, you know, I frankly resent implications to the contrary. I mean, the, yeah, the record's there, the number's there, their board is made up of business leaders from all, the whole gamut of what we have in Fergus Falls and non-business owners and people who've been there, done that, got the T-shirt. And obviously, the board thinks that they're doing a good idea, or doing a good job. I just, I, I can't agree and I, I support Greater Fergus Falls and I think it's a great investment.
Thanks, thanks, Tom. Scott, did you?
I think the one area that I could probably add a little clarity is the specific question asked to do with this additional funding or this additional commission that would be paid and the current activities of Greater Fergus Falls, we would expect to continue. And if this motion or resolution doesn't go through, what's been going on will continue to go on. So this isn't replacing something, this isn't changing, you know, what's already taking place. So that's good to know, good to understand. But the one area that we were wanting to encourage, I think is the way to look at it, is a more proactive effort towards selling city-owned property. We've got the dairy property, we've got the RTC, we've got the Norgan property, some pretty big chunks as well as lots of smaller pieces that have just sat there and if somebody comes in and expresses an interest, over the year, last couple of years, for example, we've had a lot here and there where someone's come in with a letter of intent or a request to buy a particular property and we act on it, we sell it and we get our ten or twenty or thirty thousand dollars. But to sell some of these bigger things and to attract, for example, a housing developer that would put in a bunch of houses or a bigger business that would take a big chunk of land, that takes a particular effort that is not free. And so putting a commission to it as an extra incentive, it's not unlike any real estate agent contract, that you would hire somebody to do a specific thing for a specific price. And I think that's the way that we were looking at this particular effort. And I don't think it would be wrong if Lance was either giving me a yes or a no. I think that's the way I was interpreting it and that's the way our, our committee was approaching this one. There were other things that we talked about too, you know, the communication and having some kind of reporting. One of the details in this would be that the funding and the management of it, the oversight of it would be under the umbrella of the Port Authority. So the reports and the communication would be under that structure and not specifically directly to us here as a council, even though we're a lot of the same people. But that's how we thought it fit best, dealing with Port Authority properties, city-owned properties that would be managed by certain incentives that are available through the Port Authority and how Greater Fergus would then, Greater Fergus Falls would then work with that, you know, organizationally. That seemed to be appropriate. Thanks.
Thanks, Scott.
I think the only thing that I would add is that probably we should have some language that says this is subject to kind of like the budget. Obviously, you know, the tax levy committee is meeting and the Port Authority has obviously, or, or it should get kind of maybe referred back to the Port Authority or something because this, technically the way this is written, the city council is making a commitment on behalf of the Port Authority as opposed to the Port Authority doing this. And I think also then we need to understand the impact to the Port Authority budget because the Port Authority has some expenses coming up, you know, as well. So I think, you know, holistically, we need to understand how it's all gonna fit, so.
So am I correct to understand that this, your intention would be that it would be for 2025?
Correct.
And therefore, the levy would be in 2025. We wouldn't start it this year with Port Authority funds.
Correct.
It would start next year and we'd have to levy a new, an additional forty-eight thousand in the port for that.
Yeah, but I think it would be nice that we, before making the commitment commitment, we should understand what the impact of that forty-eight thousand dollars is to the Port Authority.
Yeah, no, you go ahead. The only thing I was gonna add is just to clarify or make sure everybody understands, we're just looking at directing staff to draft a resolution tonight. So we're gonna have this exact conversation likely again when the resolution is before us and what Councilmember Hicks is referring to is a draft of that draft, which was sent out to the working group members, so it hasn't been distributed to all council members. It's draft in anticipation that this gets approved tonight, then we'll finalize that.
Okay.
And it'll be back before the council to act on that resolution.
So maybe in between those two times, we can come to the Port Authority and, right?
Certainly, yep. So I'm just giving you all the heads up that we will have the exact discussion again when the item is before you, so.
Right. We like to duplicate things.
Just one more comment and I appreciate Councilmember Ruffer's comments. Yeah, and, and Bill basically had mentioned, it'd be a hundred, probably a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for a city employee to do that. Why does it have to be city? Let's put it out to a private, private entity and the city can support it. That's, that's where I'm at with that. Have a, have its own group and the city, if they wanna put in fifty thousand dollars, that's what they get. And see how that group, what they do with their money, what they do with their other donations that come in to run this. And it's usually business people that put their money into this because they wanna see the city grow. And it's not only business owners, it's professionals, bankers, attorneys, things of that nature that will, will do that. So that's where I'm kinda, that's why I'm a little hesitant with that. I don't want somebody to, you know, basically, we do have a city employee that's gonna take ninety-eight thousand dollars plus five percent commissions. So, and that five percent commissions, we don't even know what that's gonna be. Hopefully, hopefully that there'll be some development. Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of comments to that. That's exactly what we have done. So the city has invested fifty thousand dollars, their budget has been in excess of two-hundred-and-fifty, closer to three-hundred thousand and that, the additional funding came from businesses, came from banks, came from attorneys, it came from the business community. That was the idea behind Greater Fergus Falls, was to leverage so we didn't have to have one city staff sitting in city hall, that we would leverage the work of the business community. That's exactly what they've done over those years. Secondly, now to talk about the commission, we've talked about this before, I think to Scott's point, five percent of nothing is nothing, right? But they're not being marketed right now. So we have properties out there. If we want development, we need to market that development, that property for development. So I think to say it's a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for a city employee, the budget that Greater Fergus Falls has is in excess of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand in economic development efforts. So to do the same thing that Greater Fergus Falls is doing with the city, we would have a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar budget impact and that would lose the work, the volunteer hours and the, the partnerships that we've gained with the business community. So I think what you're saying is exactly what Greater Fergus Falls has done. They've gone out and leveraged minimal city investment to create private development in that organization, so.
I, I do understand that, Mayor. I understand it very well, but what I'm getting at is why is it always a city? Why does a city have to do it? Why isn't there others out there that will do that?
They are. Greater Fergus Falls is that entity and they are doing that.
But I'm just saying, here we are gonna double what they're gonna get just from another four thousand a month for a year. That's, that's what I, I don't understand that. But I do understand what you're, what you're trying to tell me, so, thank you.
That's with the working group, which was Scott, Rachel's, Councilmember Rachel's, Councilmember Hicks and Councilmember Kwame worked on this for four months. Thank you with the Greater Fergus Falls Corporation. So there is a motion to, to direct staff to prepare the resolution and we'll have this discussion again. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
That motion carried. Mr. Layton? Yeah, Mark Layton, Fergus Falls. Lance and I have shook hands and that's about as much as we've had, unfortunately. We did try...
as we've had, unfortunately. We did try to meet with him. Mr. Kramer and myself spoke at length with prior Greater Fergus Falls staff. I've got the 20, I have the 2022 Form 990 that the nonprofit files, similar to a tax return. Their total expenses were 294,000 that year. Let's just assume that that average annual expense is 275,000, collected by more entities than the city. But 275 times 5 is 1,003, nearly 1,004. Payroll and initiatives constitute about 55% of that budget. Lance, congratulations on the job. I'll take it any day myself. Mr. Rachel, you indicated that there's a threshold on this thing. I think it was originally five years. We don't know what's gonna happen from the other people, excuse me, the other companies that are funding Greater Fergus Falls. Mr. Ruffer, I'd like to see a list that you would send me of what Greater Fergus Falls has actually done. And thirdly, if I were a real estate agent in town, and you're gonna funnel Fergus Falls properties, if I understand this correctly, to Greater Fergus Falls to market, I don't know, Lance, are you a real estate agent? We don't know. But if I were a real estate agent in Fergus Falls, this would be very disheartening. Again, put a taxpayer-funded position in to do a private industry's job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Layton. Last, Lance, just to be clear.
Yeah, just to clear up a couple of things here. I did, I did shake Mark's hand my very first day of work, and I introduced myself to him. He has never reached out to me since, okay? So, I know, we, no, yeah, we shook hands, right? And you have never tried to reach out to me. So don't, yeah, yeah, just, just, it's not accurate. Okay, so let's just make sure, all right? And quite honestly, right now, no one is, no one is projecting where the Port Authority properties are, right? No one's, no one's doing anything about it at this point. So how much money have you made to sell it at this point? All of those properties? Any? Is there any funds coming in?
Al? Not that I know of. But I'm anxious to see what's gonna happen.
Yeah, me too. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. And just to be clear, too, if there are any real estate agents that brought a development forward, there'd be a commission on that land for them as well. So, any, that's been in the past, it's in the future. So that's, that's.
Is there anybody on Greater Fergus Falls that is real, has a real estate Realtor's license?
Yes, there is. Yes, there is. The president of the organization has a real estate broker's license.
Oh, that's right. I forgot Andrew's on there.
Moving along. Number 12, item number 12 is a resolution accepting a $2,500 donation from the Inga M. Johnson Endowment Fund. Scott?
Do we have to vote on this yet?
We did already.
Oh.
We did, yeah.
Okay. I missed it, sorry.
No, no problem. I, I, we voted, we voted and then we, then we called on. Scott, did you have a, did you have a comment or a question on that?
Simply a comment. I just wanted to take the opportunity to recognize the Inga M. Johnson Endowment Fund for their donation. Oftentimes, these types of things kind of fly right past us in the consent agenda. And I thought it would be appropriate to kind of give them a shout out. The history that the Inga M. Johnson Endowment Fund has with the Lake Alice area also is kind of close to me. Inga worked the Lake Alice grocery for 50 years. And so there's some pretty significant personal skin in the game from her in this city and her support and the support of that endowment fund as it gets channeled through the West Central Initiative has been ongoing for many projects. This is just one of many that have been funded in part by this endowment fund. And we look forward to continuing to see some benefit from this. I, again, just wanted to give a shout out to this family and this endowment fund for their donation.
Thanks, Scott. Is that a resolution?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second, Tom, second. Any questions?
Yeah, I echo the sentiment, Scott. It's an important endowment in our community, and they've done a lot of really important work. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight, we just, we have three first readings of ordinance. The first is ordinance 47, eighth series, regarding the franchise fee for Otter Tail Power Company. We just need this introduced tonight. I think there are some people here. We said that we would let people speak, but from the council's perspective, we'll get an introduction. Thank you, Scott. And with that, if there's people, I think we said they would be allowed to speak tonight, and floor is open.
Is it open?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, the floor is open. So just to explain the process, you're free to come to the, Mr. Lumber, you can come to the, so there'll be, tonight, they'll be introduced. If the council wishes to have a second reading of these, we'd be at the next meeting. And that's the time that the council would vote on these actions. But tonight, I did say we would open up the floor for comments, so.
That's perfect. That was Pat Lumberg, Outstate Brewing Company, here in Fergus Falls. That was one of my questions. Where are we at in the process? You answered that. So thank you. So at the second reading, there will be then an action.
That's when the council votes is, on any ordinance is, there's a, we go through committee. It's a motion to draft, to have the city attorney draft an ordinance. That ordinance has a first reading, which we, was, is introduced at the first reading, which happened just now. And then we have a second reading of that ordinance, and that's the time of any ordinance when it's voted on.
Then it would become active if it was approved. You know, I don't want to be contrary or contrarian. It's a difficult business climate right now, especially for those in my industry. The brewing industry has taken a hit since COVID. People's habits have changed. The introduction of ready-to-drink cocktails has taken a lion's share of market. Now these THC products as well. All of our inputs have gone up. You've heard me say this before. And please hear me when I'm saying I mean no disrespect. Never have. And I hope you all have felt that. It's just hard to think about paying more in terms of taxes. It's a tax. I mean, whatever we want to call it, the franchise fee is a tax. On top of, just in my industry, an excise, federal taxes, excise tax on beer, and then a federal income tax, state taxes in Minnesota, the state excise tax on beer, the sales tax, the alcohol tax, the use tax, the income tax, the property tax, and then the local taxes, sales tax. On top of that, brewery license fees, every event that we go to, every jurisdiction wants 100 bucks or 200 bucks for a fee. On top of that, we have to pay for all of our labeling in terms of, if we put a new beer out in our taproom, we hang a sign, 45 bucks. You know, we could spend in excess of $5,000 a year just to put up new signs for new beers. At some point, we have to ask, is this sustainable? Well, for, for me, I'm asking, is this sustainable? We're on the edge. Our business is great, but we're on the edge. If you've been there, you see a lot of people there. It's great. I haven't taken a paycheck in four years, by the way. Can't. We, we've been open for four years, but shut down for two because of COVID and all this stuff. We're at a place where we're behind on our loans. We're getting a refinance with a new bank. I got a letter from the city that, a few weeks ago, a couple weeks ago, saying you're gonna act on closing down on our mortgage if we don't pay 17 grand by May 15. We have a refinance coming up, hopefully by the end of June. And now I've got to come up with $17,000 just to satisfy a loan that I'm behind on. It's an IRP loan. I came to a certain member of the council months ago, asking for some kind of agreement where we could get a letter to have some kind of payment plan put together so that we could get a loan from our point-of-sale system. And I was denied that. All I needed was some kind of agreement on a payment plan, or interest only. But I was told that based on my little performance at the franchise fee meeting, probably wasn't gonna happen. So, you know, we want to say that we're welcome to business, and Fergus Falls is a wonderful place. And we have wonderful people. We have a wonderful community. In fact, the only reason that Outstate is still here is because of our community. And you're all a part of that community. But decisions have to be made on what you spend money on, on the local level. And we have to stop leaning on small business to cover these things, because the types of things that you want to tax greater are some of the greatest inputs that we have: natural gas, electricity. And now I got the, the city letter, increasing water by 10% and other things. It's just more and more and more. So, again, I don't envy your position. I don't. I wouldn't want to be on the council. I thank you for your service. But I, I wonder, have we exhausted all other possibilities? Have we looked at grants, state level, county, whatever? I'm not informed on those. Have we looked at grants? And if so, what's the report on that? How much money is available to a local town like ours or city like ours? Has that been exhausted? I don't know. So I guess I'm just asking, maybe put a pause on this at least, until we can figure out a better way. Because I don't think that the money that's gonna be raised from this franchise fee is enough to make a dent in the road problem. So, again, I respectfully submit that to you. I appreciate you all. I thank you for your service. But let's find a way. Thanks.
Thanks, Pat.
Pat, I admire your presence. He speaks from the heart. Fortunately, I can speak a little bit more from financial backgrounds. I think there was a quote at the first meeting of the franchise tax. It's a foregone conclusion. I have my checkbook ready to write my donation to a local charity, because I think it's a slam dunk, even though the council said that it's not. Pat reflects the same conversation that we had from the chamber executive. Main Street Mom and Pa shops can't afford this. If we're business friendly, we better wake up. I look at elderly budgets. Where are they gonna get the other 20 bucks? The other 20 bucks, the other 20 bucks. I would like to hear a councilperson request a tax burden to the taxpayers, the whole picture, which would include items that are not a primary function of the city: convention center, RTC, ice arena, parks, splash pad, Spies Park, Aqua Center, D Lagoon, Mobile Stage. If you add all those up, not only the principal and interest payments, but also add up all the operating losses, I want to see what this is costing the taxpayer. I've not got that number. And I respect Bill's time. He's a busy guy. I'm asking a councilperson to make a motion to look at this broadcast area view of these costs to the taxpayer. And it's not just businesses, it's that elderly person who is on Social Security. And I'll cap that with, again, higher real estate, or pardon me, cap that with the higher real estate taxes, higher utility bills, higher electric bills, higher insurance. Many of our companies are going up 125% or pulling out of the state. You have shrink inflation. I agree with Pat, it's not the right time. It is not a friendly move if you go with franchise tax. And again, I hope someone gives me a global accounting of the tax burden of these items.
Mark, what do you mean about the Mobile Stage?
The Mobile Stage is this semi-trailer? Is there a budget on that?
That was donated to the city, basically. We, ARPA funds, and the Vadeen Trust gave a generous 50,000 donation for that. So it was not funded by the taxpayers. So I just, that I knew off the top of my head. So I didn't know if you were looking for something different on the Mobile Stage.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was a budget. I haven't looked at all the 60 different divisions on it. It was just one of the items I know that the city owns. I don't know what it costs to insure it. I don't know what it costs to move it. I don't care. I don't know what it costs to rent it. I mean, there's gotta be a budget, but.
Yeah, we charged $500 to rent it.
Yeah. And gratefully, it was donation. It's a wonderful thing.
Yep.
Thanks, Mr. Layton.
I would love to see the report. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to?
Al Frank, Fergus Falls. I suppose I better say something, because at the meeting I said, are we gonna be allowed to speak on it? And I heard your reference at the beginning of this, and I better say something then. So I'll keep it brief. I, I believe Al Kramer said something about looking at putting it on pause. I think that's a good idea. You've been told by many people, many businesses, and I've heard the same thing, that it's not the thing to do. It's, it's a tax. It's an additional tax to, to what you're doing. And I have said for years that the city has not been as fiscally responsible as they should be. It's nice to have all the niceties, but it's more important to deal with what's important, like streets and all this kind of thing. So I would respectfully ask that you put it on hold and give it quite a bit more consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay. Question for Lance. What would your?
That's not what I was gonna start asking.
No, it had to do with franchise tax.
Sure. I, I don't know that.
Well, I guess the question that I had for Lance was, what is your plan to combat a franchise? I mean, this is very pertinent to you because you're in economic development. How are you gonna combat the franchise tax with a new, a new company or something that might want to come in here, a business or industry? Because that's, that's kind of difficult. I'd like to know, do you have a plan for that?
Al, I don't have a plan for just the franchise tax. There's a whole bunch of, there's so many marks that you have to take, take into consideration for what we're doing, you know, with the property. So I don't.
Actually, what I was just asking was, do you see that being an issue for you?
It absolutely is. Yeah, you asked me for a plan.
Yeah, and if you have a plan. At first, I should have switched it around for you.
I don't have a very specific plan for it right now, but it is in, it is in the works.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Okay. Again, we'll have, we have another first reading of ordinance 48, eighth series, which is the franchise fee.
You're on it. Can we make comments?
Yeah, yeah. Let's get the, let's introduce all three, and then if we're gonna do any action or comments, let's just do them on all three. So someone just like to introduce the franchise fee ordinance for Great.
So someone just like to introduce the, uh, franchise fee ordinance for Great Plains Natural Gas. Well, I'm for it. Thank you, Tom. And then finally, we need a first reading, someone to introduce the franchise fee for Lake Region Electric Cooperative.
I can make that.
Thanks, Anthony. Okay, go ahead, Anthony.
Um, I think, uh, you know, I, I equally agree that I, I think the timing isn't good for the introduction of this. Um, I, I think, you know, we have the school that is looking on May the fourteenth to do a bond referendum for fifty-four million dollars. Um, on Wednesday morning, when I asked, um, Superintendent Drake about, uh, the, the Lincoln Center, you know, that actually is an additional sixteen and a half million dollars. So basically, that, they're in year one of repayment of that. So there's another fourteen years of that payment to make. So that's going to add seventy million dollars of debt to the taxpayer, you know, on, on top of this, which is going to significantly impact people's property tax. And I think that for us to kind of implement this at this time, not knowing the outcome of that vote, um, you know, is probably not prudent. I, I would ask that we put this on pause, um, until we know at least where the outcome of the school referendum is, because that will impact, obviously, every single taxpayer, including the businesses in town. Um, I equally have heard from a lot of businesses that are concerned about the impact of, uh, of this, of this cost to them in terms of, you know, maintaining their business presence. Um, so I, I think as much as, you know, we need to obviously fix roads, I think, at this point, we're, we're in a position that, you know, there's so many things against us that introducing this would be, you know, a bigger impact than, than just kind of, you know, the, it's, it's very easy to break things down and say, well, if you did this, it's only twenty-six cents a day, um, or thirty-seven cents a day. But it is also, it's, it's thirty-seven cents for this, and it's, it's another fifty cents for that, and it's another, you know, cents for that. And then when you multiply it up by three hundred and sixty-five, and then you multiply it by twenty-two years, then that's, that becomes a lot of money. So I think, um, you know, I would like to see us at least pause this, um, so that when we're, we're, we put it on, on hold. We, we've got the data, and the data won't change a lot. Um, and that's kind of thing. And, and then just secondly, to obviously address Patrick Lundberg's, uh, regarding the letter from the city for seventeen thousand dollars. Um, it should be noted that obviously Outstate do have a loan with the city. Um, I am that council member that he's referring to. And, um, you know, at the end of the day, I have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of Fergus Falls. We lent money to somebody. Um, you know, at the end of the day, if they don't make those payments back to the city, unfortunately, we have to, you know, take our course of actions that protect the city. Um, so, you know, some of those conversations are not necessarily the most pleasant to have. Uh, but at the end of the day, Outstate has not paid the city since January the first of this year. Uh, so, you know, to stand and say that we're demanding money is a true statement. Yeah, we are demanding money, but that's because we haven't been paid. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jan. I've talked to, uh, thank you, Anthony. I've talked to others who I think feel similarly, that maybe, time is not right on this vote for some people on the council. So I think, uh, if someone would like to offer a motion that we delay the vote.
We need a point of clarification.
Certainly, certainly. I'll give you an opportunity, Mr. Lundberg. But it's, it feels to me like someone wants to offer a motion, do we delay consideration of the final second reading of, someone like to offer that?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Tom. Someone like to second that?
I would second it.
Thanks, Jim.
Can I just comment one thing? I mean, is your motion to delay it, or you want to make perhaps, because your motion is to set the second reading for a certain date?
I think we just delay it indefinitely.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think.
If the council has the information, we can bring it back.
Or discussion that needs to be had.
Is that, that's okay with you, Anthony? Is that your second, Anthony?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Scott.
You know, the roads aren't going to be, they're not going to keep getting better. They're going to get worse, and we delay this. We did this, what'd you guys do this three years ago, the same thing, and you delayed it? I'm a business owner. I know the, I know the feeling of what it's going to take to do this. I'm part of the guy that pushed this, to make this decision to get, because the roads belong to the people. They don't belong to us eight up here. They belong to everybody. And I don't want to pay any more than anybody else has to, but it's going to affect me more than anybody else in this council. And I don't like it, but I also have to look what's best for the city. If we don't do something not right, I mean, I'd like to see it done now, but I mean, we have to do something to these roads. Kivore's not going to get fixed. Junius is not going to get fixed. Um, it's just going to push everything back, and then here we sit again, complaints about it, and it's, it's just nothing's going to happen. And I don't want to see it. I want to see it move forward. I understand about what it's going to cost people, but they belong to us, the people. They don't belong to just the council. They belong to the people. And so that's where my deal is, and I'll, I'll vote against delaying it, so.
Thanks, Scott.
Brett?
Yeah, this is a topic that's, I voted against it several years ago. I mean, I like the whole concept of the idea for the people who are normally not paying their fair share, paying their fair share, and I've been back and forth on this several times. And it's, when the bond referendum, when he talked about that last week, that was the straw that broke it for me. And I was on the phone with several people in this room over the weekend, and I just, right now, until we know what's going on with that, and honestly, whether you want to call this an election thing, until I know what's going on with our current administration in DC, which caused all those problems, I'm, I can't make a decision on that right now. I just, there's too many things that got to come to play before I can make a decision on something like this. I mean, I'm forward on delaying it.
Thanks, Brett. So, uh. No, no, you can't right, no, you can't right now, actually. Okay, we're, we're in the middle of a conversation. We're going to vote on a motion that's on the floor. So, uh, I'll just say this, it has been a productive conversation. Um, I don't think anyone could argue that. And we've got the information. We've gone through the work. I think that the point is, the council asked staff to bring back a plan to have major, significant increases in funding to fix the roads. We did that. Obviously, I think there's been some people who feel that it's not, uh, the right time to do that, and I would tend to agree with them. So, uh, we have the information we need. The, the, uh, the second, the final reading can be brought back by the council at some point in the future, but the motion on the floor is to delay that until future time when the council deems that appropriate. Anyone aware of that? Anyone who with that? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries. Scott, I think I cut you off. Did you, did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, yeah, I was going to point out that I was going to also vote against it. I think that the delay has been expressed as being a good idea, uh, for its many reasons. But as Scott had said, it's not going to get any cheaper. I think that, uh, most of us are here, have heard from people for years about the condition of the roads and that becoming one of the main things that we were asked to focus on. And so the work was done to find a way to address that question. And, okay, so the timing is lousy, but it is what it is. It's not going to get any cheaper. It's not going to get any simpler. And I think that to, that we need to continue to invest in our community. We need to continue to maintain our city assets. And this was the best plan for what we've got to work with right now that was brought to us. I think the staff did the work that they needed to do, and they gave us a workable option. And there's going to be hard cases. And whether it was this situation on this specific question or other things, there's always going to be hard cases. And that's, frankly, that's just the way it goes. And it's, it's a sad thing in some situations where it's just difficult. Um, I knew this was going to be a hard one tonight, and it's not easy to be on the side of this that I am. But again, I'm looking at this from the long-term view of how we've been criticized for not doing things properly over the years, and we've had that thrown back at us, like you didn't do what you should have years ago. Well, here we have an opportunity to do what we should for what will be happening years from now. And, um, trying to keep that view in mind, and the need to, you know, maintain our assets and do what we've been asked to do is what brought me to that vote.
Thank you, Scott. All right, so, Mr. Lundberg, did you, you asked, uh,
Just a point of order, Pat Lundberg, Outstate. Um, to what Mr. Hicks said, I contacted him early in the winter asking for a plan to come together with some kind of arrangement, so I could get a letter that stated that arrangement, so that I could get funding from a third source to become solvent and current with the city. Our business has been through enormous things that I can't get into right now. But the reality is, I brought that request, I was turned down, and I was countered with, you need to pay us through May in order for me to write you this letter. That, to me, is kind of extortion. And, um, I didn't appreciate it then. I don't appreciate it now. Um, that's all I'd say. Thank you.
I have, I have to ask one question about that. Pat, in, in that letter, didn't it say that the city had to say that you were current on your loan, and the city couldn't sign to that?
No, no, I would have never asked for something that was not.
But I thought that's what it said in the loan. Do you know that, Ralph, or in that letter?
No, I mean, it's, my understanding is that, that there was an obligation to be current. I mean, I wasn't sure what the request was.
No. It was either be current or have a written plan, and that, I can pull up the square documents to, to prove that. So, um, if that was missed somewhere, you know, that kind of thing happens. But I would never ask anybody to do anything untoward or unethical. That's just not who I am.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Can I just add some of the, the process of it is, um, Business Development for Fergus Falls is the body that oversees the loan.
Maybe you want to speak into it.
Yeah, Business Development for Fergus Falls is the body that oversees the loan, and they are the ones that made a decision that they would not be extending a payment plan. So I'm, I'm just, I'm not saying it was just Mr. Hicks. It was an entire board that had the discussion and has the background on, on the lending, and that was the choice that they made together.
I don't know. Anything else for me?
Thanks, Clark. All right, moving along.
I apologize for trying to interrupt, Mr. Hicks. Uh, if, if the seventy million dollar bonding goes through, the annual payment's four and a half million bucks. So you can do the math by population of the school district, which includes people in Fergus Falls. And I hope the minutes reflect the individual votes versus it just passing. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving along. Tonight, under presentation of claims, we have bills in the amount of four million, five hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and four dollars. If there's any questions, we will direct those to our city finance director. Someone like to make a resolution?
For me? I offer that, that we pay the bills.
Thanks, Jim. Brent, second? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. A resolution is approved. There is no old, unfinished, or new business. Lynn, do you have any miscellaneous announcements? See, done. We will be adjourned.